Good morning and thank you for joining. I'm Ariseli Cruz, Calbright's Marketing Manager. Today, I'd like to welcome you to our Board of Trustees meeting on Monday, September 21st, 2020. Please follow along with our agenda on Board Docs. You can find the link on our website, calbright.org, under About, Board of Trustees. First up, we'll be entering into closed session. And upon our return to open session for attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature in Zoom to request to address the board for up to three minutes. If you're joined by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. You'll be unmuted and called upon at the appropriate time. Public comments should be pertaining to today's agenda. If you have any other questions, please direct them to our Communications Director, Taylor Huckabee, by emailing taylor@calbright.org. A reminder, this board meeting is being recorded. And with that, I'd like to introduce our Board President, Tom Epstein.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our board meeting. And we'll start by calling the roll.
Gilda Garagonaldo?
Here.
Darius Anderson? Felicia Escobar Corillo?
Here.
Amy Costa?
Here.
Colm Fitzgerald?
Here.
Tom Epstein?
Here.
Pam Haynes?
Here.
Kevin Hall? Jolina Grande?
Here.
Jennifer Perry? Kim Perigo?
Here.
Bill Rawlings?
Here.
Valerie Shaw?
Here.
Alma Salazar?
Here.
And our new person, I cannot pronounce her first name, Yulina Tesavara? Blas Villalobos?
Here.
And Joseph R. Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we're going to proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask our newest board member, Joseph Williams, to please lead us in the pledge.
Here's a...
All right, thank you. If everyone could place your hands over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, thank you. We are... Good morning, and I hope all of you are okay despite the fire and the smoke that we've all been enduring. I know some of our colleges have been impacted by that very directly. And I want to welcome our new members, Joseph Williams, who we've just heard from, Ilya Tarasova, and Lieutenant Governor Alani Kounalakis will be joining us later today. She's, in fact, I think she's on. So, welcome Lieutenant Governor, and we're delighted to have you on the board as well. And so, as I said, we're going to begin with a closed session that may take about as long as an hour. And then later in the meeting, we'll be making some significant progress on building out the organization and initiating a process to create a strategic vision. And I want to stress how important it is that we get the input of everyone in the public and all the constituencies that want to comment on our strategic vision. We'll look forward to doing that in the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to President Menon.
Thank you, President Epstein, Vice President Haynes, and members of the Board of Trustees. I also wanted to extend a warm welcome to our newest board members, including the Lieutenant Governor, who we are very excited to have as a part of the Calbright Board. It has felt like every month we meet, it's on the heels of a new tragedy that's afflicting our state or our nation, whether it's the many in our communities and institutions throughout our state who are affected by the raging wildfires, or the whole left by the passing of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, an icon in our nation's highest court, who held her space on the bench to give voice to equity and to give conscience to our country's laws, who stood up and fought for justice and opportunity. She always reminds us that real change, enduring change, it happens one step at a time. And each of these events, their effects, they really bring into clear focus for us the critical nature of our public mission and the urgency surrounding our responsibility to build greater opportunities for struggling Californians, and really the tangible work that that action, and action that that requires. To that end, we have been heads down, hard at work for the past several weeks to prepare for a new incoming group of students. We are rapidly building our efforts to develop key capacities for the college, hiring necessary staff and leadership to advance our work, and conducting the analysis needed to prepare for the new normal of our economic recovery. We are also getting launch ready for the next phase of our program development, including redesigned aspects of the student experience. Last month, as you, as many of you know, we onboarded our first full-time faculty. That is a very critical step to the next stage of our college's development. We are supporting that faculty with professional development opportunities to help the college's efforts to deliver that best-in-class competency-based program experience and student support interventions. The college has been working closely with the Competency-Based Education Network, SEBEN, to enhance our efforts and support the development of programs that are really aligned to a quality framework for competency-based education that's adopted by leading practitioners in the field. This approach allows us to move much more swiftly and in a really standards-based way, from theory to action, and it's really helping us raise the bar on quality while allowing for a more systemized way to continuously improve students' learning experiences and towards the stronger outcomes that we want to see. Similarly, we have teamed up with a research team from the Community College Research Center at Teachers College at Columbia Universities. Many of you know them as the architects of guided pathways. We're working with them around some of our baseline student advising and support interventions. And in the last week, we have done an in-depth training on the analytical data and case management tools that are available to our academic success counselors for student support. These are the kinds of steps that are building our strategy, but also our best practices to improve student supports, including those that we want to see better integrated with instructional efforts that we think will provide a more personalized response to the diverse needs of our students in support of their progression. Next month, I'm going to be very excited to share with the board much deeper qualitative and quantitative analysis of our new understanding of some of the core labor market challenges facing employers in a COVID world and how it really relates to what we do for the college's focus population. This information is going to be really important to guide future, the future of the college's programs and service development, and it really honors our distinctive mission and purpose, allowing us to advance an ongoing process to build programs that are more responsive and that are adaptable to the changing needs that we're seeing in our state. While we are in this process of building a very data-driven infrastructure to direct our work, we've also been supplementing our understanding of critical needs across the state with informal conversations with a number of our sister community college districts, regional consortia, and other workforce development functions in the state that are interested in collaboratively preparing for the next stage of our economic recovery. At Calbright, throughout the system and across the country, most higher education leaders are really finding ourselves in the new reality that requires increasingly creative solutions. And this comes also, I think, with the recognition that if we're actually going to position our public institutions to successfully respond to the crisis that we face, it's going to require that we not go back to business as usual, but rather that we solve collective challenges more collaboratively. For us, this is going to start with a shared view and definition of the problems that we're trying to address, a nuanced understanding of the differential needs of the diverse communities we're serving, and solution development that's generated through greater collaboration and collective action. At the college, we are reading ourselves to support that activity with our own partnership work as we grow partnerships across the state with a range of institutions, organizations, and other intermediaries. All of these folks kind of hold one piece of the puzzle that we need to solve for in order to support our students from entry into that labor market transition. Progress surrounding our work that we had spoken to the board about previously at Bakersfield College serves as a shining illustration of this. And over the final, the past two weeks, we've entered kind of the final stages of mapping and articulation agreement between Calbright's medical coding program and Bakersfield's College Health Information Technology Associates degree program. This, we anticipate launching the pilot program in the spring semester at Bakersfield, and it'll be an important marker for how these new partnerships and developments support and enhance our efforts to support both Calbright's support for and the system's support for economically displaced adults. The partnership and collaboration work we aim to build going forward continue to be in service of equity and focused on strategic areas that are going to solve some of these common challenges that are facing a cross-section of low-wage workers, of unemployed individuals who are going to need services and transition support into the labor market. For the next several months, we will also continue to build our efforts around core functions of the college internally. In our efforts to build out key parts of the college organization, we are continuing to prioritize the development of policy, governance, and related responsibilities for the college. Internally, we continue to work on the development of our administrative procedures, and externally towards higher-level board policies that we see as priorities for the district's development. These include things like data studying and enacting strong data, student data privacy policies, technology use policies, and other areas of importance for online delivery to the benefit of Calbright students, but also hopefully to share with the system's online efforts as a whole. This coming month, we will also be accelerating our work towards securing accreditation through the Distance Education Accrediting Commission. That work will begin with our faculty, staff, and administrators developing kind of clear standards for institutional self-evaluations and reporting that goes into that accreditation process. And kind of across the college operations, we're stepping up our efforts to both evaluate and evolve online student support services and enhancing our technology development and implementation. Several new support initiatives are being implemented this month, including Unified Calbright Career Services. We're offering a range of services from career coaching to employer engagement webinars and ramping up our web chat series to provide students more opportunities to hear directly from industry professionals, to establish better contacts, and to help them prepare in very concrete ways for upcoming job searches. We are also engaged in outreach to prospective students, raising the quality as well as the quantity of that work. And we will be integrating some aspects of technology that will help the work of our welcome services outreach efforts, again, with that goal of providing both flexibility and greater personalization. Likewise, our communications team is working with our technology department to improve website resources. These are small things, these are large things, as a part of our ongoing efforts to make our application process as accessible as possible. We are looking at patterns that we've seen in which prospective Calbright students may be getting lost in Open CCC and the CCC Apply System, and we're designing support processes specifically around these bottlenecks to see if addressing those patterns will, in fact, increase our rates of applications completed. On the technology front, we are pursuing a number of different changes, both big and small, continuing to prioritize our efforts to implement a new student information system and a new enterprise resource planning system that will help prepare us and set the foundation for scaling up our efforts. We've also made a series of improvements to enhance the student experience across the website, including moving to a server that's faster and that's, has more consistent load times, which sounds like a strange thing to highlight, but it's the kind of thing that better supports students who have spotty internet access. We are now also in the user testing phase of a new student portal and a revised homepage where students can access in one place all of their coursework, relevant Calbright materials. And this will follow kind of new capability we've added to help track students, follow students through their progress in their coursework. And those kinds of things will allow us to build better dashboards, better automations to determine if a student gets stuck, how to better support them across the entire process. We are also focused on strengthening our data security, which is very critical to us as we grow to serve more students. The IT security team at Calbright recently completed a cybersecurity gap analysis using NIST standards and have initiated a bunch of follow-up associated with those findings. And we are moving on those findings. The strategic vision that Tom mentioned, we're very excited about to begin engaging the board. The vision is really designed to be that high-level roadmap for the college's efforts over the next three years, and we're excited to work both with the board, but also with internal and external stakeholders in the process over the next few months. We think it'll strengthen the direction of the work. It'll be a way for us to clearly describe the college's efforts and progress that's really calibrated to the stage of development that the college is in. With that, I just wanted to close by thanking each and every one of you for your continued support and guidance as we accelerate our efforts, and we will be looking forward to sharing more developments over the next several months.
Thank you, President Menon. And I want to note for the record, Hillary, can you please make sure that the Lieutenant Governor is on your list for the roll call in the future? And she is, she is here in present, and we appreciate that.
I sure would.
And also, you might want to reach out to Ilya Tarasova, because I know she planned to be here, and just see what's holding her up. So with that, we will...
Mr. Care?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you very much for acknowledging my presence at my first meeting of Calbright. It's wonderful to be with all of you here, and I'm just so grateful to the governor for expanding the role of the Lieutenant Governor to add this third institution of higher education to the portfolio of the Lieutenant Governor. And I consider public higher education in the state to be the most important thing that we do in this office. So it's really just a privilege to be here with all of you, and I look forward to getting to know you and really being able to dive into the issues that Calbright is dealing with and to be supportive and helpful to all the work that you're so dedicated to.
Well, thank you, and we're delighted that you'll be part of these conversations. It'll add a lot. So with that, we will move to closed session, as I said, for probably about an hour, for those of you in the public, and then we'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Closed session. I want to note that our newest board member, Student Trustee, Ilya Tarasova, has joined us, and we welcome her and look forward to your input. And now, back to item 2.1, the closed session. My report out on that is that the Board of Trustees unanimously rejected a tort claim filed by a former employee. And that is, that is our full report. And with that, we'll move over to the consent agenda, item 3. The, is anyone going to present on that, or should we just take a motion? Or does anyone have any desire to pull off any of the items that are on consent?
Tom, this is Jolina. I was wondering if we could pull the consent agenda item for the approval of the positions. I don't know if you want me to pull just the individual one or the entire 3.2.
I think you need to pull the whole 3.2. So that's fine, we'll vote on that separately.
Thank you.
So what we're left with is probably the most exciting item of the day, approval of the minutes of the July 2020, full Board of Trustees meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay. Please, any discussion, any changes? Okay, please call the roll.
Gilda Garagonaldo?
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Corillo?
Aye.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Colm Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Jolina Grande?
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kulikas? Is she on? Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Kim Perigo? Kim Perigo? Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Alma Salazar? Miss El, see you, aye. Blas Villalobos?
Aye.
Joseph Williams?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I do want to note that the Lieutenant Governor told us that she's also interviewing candidates for the president of one of the county state system colleges today, so that's why she was going to have to be off and on during the day.
Tom? Tom, in the Q and A, somebody's saying they can't hear the dialogue, so, I mean, I can hear everybody, I just don't know if there's a technical issue.
Okay, so whoever's doing the technical side, can you try and fix that? I don't know, the person was unidentified, so I don't know how we reached that person to find out.
It's resolved, or somebody else on the chat is saying it's resolved. I just want to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're moderating the Q and A, we have it, thank you.
Okay, great. So, Member Grande, would you like to express your concern or whatever you wanted to raise? You're on mute.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I noticed on this particular agenda item, the approval of position descriptions includes the Vice President Learning and Instruction, and we are going to be asked in the next agenda item 4.1 to appoint the interim VP of Learning and Instruction. And I was just wondering if there has been a drafted complete position description for any of these new positions that are available for us, because I don't want us to end up in the same situation where we previously wandered down a path of appointing people to positions with salaries that might not necessarily be appropriate in the community college system based on the job duties and description of the position. So I just want to encourage us to have a little bit more information for our deliberations when we're asked to move immediately from a consent agenda item to establish a position and go right into appointing someone to that position without necessarily having a complete position description.
Yes. So I think in the future, we are happy to do that. Just to be clear, it is not a permanent appointment that we are asking for, but a temporary position to fill a gap in leadership that we have, particularly because having somebody in the senior-most capacity for our learning and instructional activity whilst we conduct a full and comprehensive search for that position is particularly important as we have a cadre of new full-time faculty. So part of the request to the board is absolutely in that interim capacity, and we are going to do a full-scale search for that position as well as the other positions that we're seeking approval for. So you will absolutely see that and have that for the purposes of the permanent appointment of the position.
Is, okay, does anyone else have any comments or concerns about anything on item 3.2?
Tom, can I make a modification to the motion?
Sure. Well, we don't have a motion yet, but go ahead, say what, say what you like. Do you want to, do you want to propose a modified motion?
I would like to propose a modified motion. Now we move forward with this motion with the, with the expectation that the, that it be modified to make an exception to this position while we allow it to move forward. Does that make sense?
Okay. Any, any other, we do have a public comment on this, but I want to get any other board comments before we go to the public comment.
I'll just make a second to that. Right, and we're, and right now, just, just so we're clear, we're just talking about the new positions, right? Is that, I want to make sure, okay. We'll talk about the interim VP position in the next, little bit later, okay.
Okay. So I believe there's public comment?
Yes, Jenny May from ASCCC. Okay, Jenny, you're unmuted now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So President Menon, Board President Epstein, Vice President Haynes, and esteemed members of the board, I am Jenny May, Vice President of the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges and the Liaison to Calbright this year. So congratulations on your progress in hiring more faculty, as indicated, and it was on the consent agenda, but it's not anymore. So in support of Calbright's mission of serving students and until a Calbright Academic Senate can be established, the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges continues to offer services and assistance in areas of academic and professional matters. I would like to confirm with you that the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges was responsive in appointing faculty to this round of the hiring process. If there's anything I can do to further support this good work, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jenny, that's great to hear. So, just to be clear on the motion, could, could, is it Ariseli or Hillary? Could you read back the motion we're voting on now exactly?
Be understood.
I'm sorry about that. Ariseli, did you catch that? I was observing something else. Could you, could you read the motion back, please? I'm sorry.
I was also struggling to hear Alma. I think if she wants to repeat, it would probably be best than me try to paraphrase for her.
Yes, that would be best. I'm having, we're having Wi-Fi issues here, we're so sorry.
And I'm having technical issues on my board as well.
And please slide it down this time so that we have the motion.
Does she type it in the chat?
Sure, I can do that better.
That would be best, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so we'll wait a moment for the, for the motion to be typed into the chat.
Maybe, Tom, we can spend the time instructing you on how to use emojis on your phone.
I think he should have to act him out if he doesn't know how.
Yes. I, 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 yes, I second that motion.
I can do that, yes.
Now you're putting me on the record. Now I don't even remember Jolina's, Jolina was your voice.
Was it, can I just ask, Jolina, obviously up to you, but can, can you just maybe just direct the staff, and we can do that in the future? Maybe that's the, that might be the easiest way forward, because I think you're on the consent agenda, and here, it's just a question of pulling something out of the consent agenda or not, so.
It's already been pulled out of the consent agenda, so now this is a regular action item.
And then there's one element that has been spoken in that item.
And my recommendation was to modify that portion of the motion. So is the motion to remove it from the consent agenda? Or is the motion to modify it?
I don't believe that there was a motion on the floor. It was removed from consent, but it was not presented as a motion. Not until you made the motion, Alma.
Okay, so I disregard.
Okay. Okay, so then we just need, basically on Agenda Item 3.2, we need a motion to approve.
Got it.
That's, number Salazar?
I will wait for your. There's no motion, there's nothing.
No, I'm asking for a motion now.
I will disregard my motion.
Okay, so does anyone else want to make a motion to approve item 3.2?
I move approval of 3.2, it's Pam.
We have a second.
Second.
Number Escobar Carrillo, okay, please call the roll.
Hilda Garde Agonaldo.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Colm Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jolena Grande. Jolena, you're on mute.
Aye.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor Kulakas? She's not back. Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perrigo. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Vlos Villalobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that is passed, we go now to Action Agenda, Item 4.1, Interim VP of Learning and Instruction Appointment.
So, good, good morning, Board President Taal Walker-Mennen, Board President Epstein, Vice President Hayes. We'd like to request approval of the interim appointment of our Vice President of Learning and Instruction. This interim appointment is intended to allow us to begin the recruitment and selection process for filling the position permanently. Also like to real quickly introduce our new Executive Director of HR, Donald Grady, who will be, you know, assisting me with any questions related to this, this item. Thank you.
Hey, any, any Board comments or questions, and Member Grande?
Thank you, President Epstein, I was just wondering how we arrived at the salary for this position without a complete position description, or how we determined that this position would be appropriate at this level of compensation?
So I can, I can take that question, so we, as, as, you know, as you're aware, we've engaged McKnight to do salaries for faculty, classified administrators. As part of that process, we've asked them to do a couple of soft salary studies. Essentially, you know, what we did for this one is we asked them to take that peer group that they presented at the last Board meeting, the Executive Committee meeting, and look at basically Vice President of Instruction, Vice Chancellor of Instruction, Dean positions, really, you know, looking at where those positions are, high, low, and medium, mid-range for those positions. So we used that, that data from the McKnight survey and use that to, you know, make sure we were putting this one at, at the correct level for when we do have a more formal adoption of a salary schedule for administrators.
Thank you, Nick.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, do we have a motion? To adopt this, this item? Still moved?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any public comment on this item? I think there may have been one.
The public comment is for the next item for 4.2, I don't see any for this current item.
Okay. We'll go, folks, in a moment, if anybody wants to comment on this item. Okay, so please call the roll.
Hilda Garde Agonaldo.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Colm Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perrigo. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Vlos Villalobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the item passes, we're now on to Item 4.2, the Financial Statement in 2020 Budget Hearing. Let me read something to y'all. The next item on the agenda is the proposed adoption of the budget for 2021. Pursuant to California Code of Regulations, Section 58301, Calbright is required to have a public hearing before the Board takes a budget adoption vote. The following presentation of the item and the public comment constitute the requisite hearing. We welcome your public comments. So after the presentation, we will have public comments. So please proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, Nick Tricer, Chief Financial Administrative Officer. So this item, we're requesting that the Board hold the public hearing and approve the final budget for 2021. If we could bring up the slide deck. The, that was for the previous, the budget slide deck.
Go ahead and get started, Nick, I'll bring it up.
All right, all right, so let me just start real quickly with an overview of our actual expenditures for 2019-20. When you, when you see these numbers, they shouldn't, they should be pretty familiar to you, we've been projecting from the, from the ongoing funds, projecting estimated expenditures around 15 million since, since February for this year, and they came in at 14.7 million. And then for the one-time funds, we'd been projecting very modest expenditure of those funds. You know, I think that we've only spent a couple hundred thousand of those funds, and, and the reasons are the same as what we've been updating you on for most of the year. When the, when the budget was adopted last year, there was assumed, you could go to, yeah, right. It was assumed a fairly high number of positions would be, would be approved and filled early in the year. You know, very few of these were actually approved and filled. And then, though we did have fairly high expenditures on the operating, for operating expenses, primarily due to the need of, of using consultants and contract services to support our needs as we were bringing on staff. And then, also for the, on the one time, again, this is, you've heard this a couple of times, you know, due to the COVID-19 and other factors, we've delayed identifying headquarters facilities, so the money we'd set aside for that, you know, has been pushed out. And also, we're somewhat delayed in getting going in our, in our outreach efforts, our outreach and marketing efforts. So go, go real quick to the next slide. Yeah, so those, those are the, as I said, those are the ongoing numbers. This is pretty consistent with what you've seen, you know, last several presentations I've made. We go to the next slide, the one-time money. Again, very low expenditures out of this pot, as, as, as you're all well aware. So we could go to the next slide, if I could just real quickly review the budget development process. So this, we kicked this off in March with a discussion at the Board Meeting in March on budget goals and the budget development process, and the calendar, I presented the calendar. And then, you know, over the last several months, the executive team has been working on, on budget development. And we've also established a budget advisory committee composed of administrators, classified staff. We've had a faculty representative, representative from the State Academic Senate, and then our student, our Board Trustees, student trustees have been representing students on, on that committee. And we've had six meetings, we had six meetings of the committee in, through, May through, through August, and recommendations were, were presented to the executive team from that committee for consideration, budget development. Then we presented a draft budget to the Board in June. Tentative budget was adopted by the Board in July, and now in September, we're requesting approval of the, the final budget. If we could go to the next slide, please, and these are objectives that you saw in the presentation of the tentative budget. So I'll just go remind them, remind you of them real quick. So that the objectives are really around, you know, stepping up our efforts, you know, taking a look at our existing programs and services, and what we're doing, and particularly given the pandemic, and they hit the, to the economy and to the labor market, and really stepping up our efforts in all those areas. Certainly going to be doing more with less, as you guys are aware, from the tentative budget. We've had our funding reduced, both our ongoing and one-time funding reduced. So we need to respond to that and figure out how to stretch those dollars further. And then lastly, readying to scale, building the capacity within the college to, to, to scale up, and, you know, primarily, we're using the one-time money to do that. Next few slides, I'm just going to skip through because presented them several times to you, so we're going to go ahead and skip to the next slide, yes. So we'll start on, on that slide. So this is the, the information that, that went into the final budget. Most of this is pretty familiar to all of you, just really some minor tweaks in, in, from the tentative budget in, in, from the tentative budget to now the final budget. Certainly some refinement in the, in the FTEs, or the staffing. So we're going to have ongoing staffing of approximately 62 full-time equivalents. And then approximately 18 of those 62 are going to be filled, or we're projecting to be hired in the, the first half of 2021, or at least that's, that's, that's the plan, and we've built the budget on that assumption. And then the benefit costs, a little bit lower than, than what I'd shown you in, for the tentative budget, but still pretty high relative to what they have been for us. 2.9 million supplies, we could go to the, sorry, go to the next slide. Okay, yeah, so supplies are, I think, significantly higher than, than what we had included in, in the tentative budget, and also, but also significantly higher than, than what we had been experiencing to date, because, you know, we're expecting to have, you know, added staff and added students. So we need to set aside more money for supplies. Expenses for consultants and contract services, this is also a little bit higher than, than the tentative budget. We did, we did analysis of all of our contracts and found that we needed to, to, and particularly for on the contract services side, I needed to, you know, increase those expenditures a little bit from what we had shown for the tentative budget. And then last, or the other operating expenses, travel and professional development, certainly set aside significant amount of money for professional development, and particularly for the newly hired faculty, you know, to get them up to speed with our programs and our structural model. You know, added significant funding for new software licenses, both for our financial and student information systems, and also reflect the larger number of staff and students. It says I, some money for fixed facility lease costs. Hopefully, we can get into a temporary facility, a temporary headquarters before the end of the year, to set aside some, some ongoing money for, for those lease costs, as, as well as when we go through the one-time money, we'll set aside some one-time money for that as well. And then the legal services is about the same, and the insurance services is, is a little bit higher than we, I think we'd underestimated the cost of insurance in, in the tentative budget, so we increased that a little bit. Now moving to the one-time funds, goes with one-time funding. So these are pretty much the same as, as what you saw in the tentative budget. Organized these into some themes that we can go through. So the first theme is strategic initiatives to support students, and that's where our partnerships and different sorts of partnerships come in. Partnerships that we're pursuing for workforce development, then the partnerships around educational, competency-based education and pathways. And as you know, we've already started a partnership with Bakersfield Community College around that. And then partnerships for place, with place-based agencies for facilities in which we can provide additional supports to students. And then we've already started a partnership with, with, and the Board approved the MOU with Compton Community College at the last meeting, part of that partnership. The biggest change in this, in the one-time funding is this next, in this next area, the program pathway development and organizational capacity. So there's a, set aside 12.5 million to fund approximately 42 FTE consultants and contract services, really to, to build, to complete the development of our instructional, student support, workforce development, technology, external affairs and research development programs, and build organizational capacity. And this one really goes towards that, that one objective of the budget, of the budget to, to ready to scale, to prepare ourselves to scale, as well as, as the, certainly the, the other, other two objectives as well, in, in terms the other other two objectives as well in in terms of, you know, doing more with last. Certainly, we've, you know, using using our our one time monies prudently to build capacity and and also to to step up and really focus on on improving our our programs. Last, the the next one in this area is the seven million to, you know, develop the new program pathways and improve our existing pathways. Same as as the tentative budget, we could go to the next slide. Then the last two is the outreach to students. That's really not changed from the tentative budget, five million for outreach and partnerships to reach out to folks that are most in need of our services. And then the last is the five million that we're currently expending on our financial and student information systems. That's the the enterprise resource planning system and also to begin development on other technologies. And then the seven point five million that we've kept in the budget for cap outlay expenses. Hope hopefully, as I said, we get into a temporary facility by the end of the year. And if we have the opportunity to get into a permanent facility, then this money is set aside for that. And if we can go to the last slide and I can just show you kind of what the what the numbers look like for the annual funding, it reflects the the reduced fifteen million in in ongoing funding. And as you can see, the expenses are coming in right at that that fifteen million. Most of the expenses as what you typically see in any community college district are on the salary and benefits side. But also significant expenses, of course, for in the operating on the operating expense line. And then for the one time funds, you know, the the reduced fund balance there is is eighty two million available to spend. You have got now reflecting goes, you know, expenditures for for staffing, for FTE out of those of those funds. Again, the the most significant expenditure of those funds is gonna be in the operating expense to fund all those partnerships I I referenced before. And and then also some money set aside for a cap outlay in facilities included and and technology for for cap outlay. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Tom, I have a question.
Go ahead, Nemo Costa.
Um, Nick, can you talk a little bit about just kind of the overall capital outlay plans? Both kind of as far as like administrative offices for headquarters, et cetera, as well as kind of some of our partnerships in light of, you know, COVID and everything, you know, I mean, what's what's kind of changed in the planning, given the pandemic?
Yeah, well, certainly certainly the the pandemic had had, you know, seemingly delayed, at least that the headquarters facility and that the initial priority was on obtaining a permanent headquarters facility in Oakland. And we were actually, I think, as of late twenty nineteen, we were actually looking at a couple of different sites for headquarters in Oakland and were having some discussions about facilities in in Sacramento. And, you know, had on the the plate the consideration of of, you know, having facilities in Southern California and and in the Central Valley as well, although that that would have been a a year or two off. So, you know, COVID happened and and that, you know, put the brakes on all of that. We we have exited from all of our temporary facilities with the exception of the the, you know, office and the the couple of cubicles that we have in the in the in the hub that is in the chancellor's office in the foundations building. So we had some temporary rework space that we no longer have. We've, you know, we've got a couple of storage rentals instead. I think, you know, we probably need to see, you know, how quickly that this the state, you know, opens up and and what maybe the timeline would be to get into, get back into a temporary facility in 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 the Bay Area. And then and then, you know, start having doing that planning around permanent facilities, you know, in the Bay Area and Sacramento and and Southern California. I will say, though, that we do, you know, part of the the MOU with Compton Community College that the board approved or the executive committee approved, I believe it was last month, included some money and and a deal to to share some space there at Compton College so that we've already got one one site where, you know, there's gonna need to be, there's some money in that in that MOU to sort of build this space out. But once it's built out, there'll be a a resource center there available to our students. You know, the plan is to, you know, initiate additional partnerships, not just with other community college districts, but, you know, maybe it's with libraries, community centers, you know, and any, you know, a range of different community organizations to to create resource, physical locations, resource centers for our students. And and to, you know, for our students and and for their, you know, other other community college students as well. So we're so, I mean, while we're on hold in in some respects, you know, we are still moving forward in other respects.
Any other board member questions?
I have a question.
I do too, Tom, but I'll I'll go after him. Bill.
Just trustee Williams.
Um, thank you for the presentation and for the information. As you look at your ongoing and your one time expenses, how do you ensure a diverse geographical representation in terms of the contracting opportunities that you have and how you're doing outreach to students? You know, how we're hiring the faculty and staff? How 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 like are the 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 range of communities getting the information? Like, I see you're gonna be doing some contracting with nonprofit organizations. How are we making sure that this is a statewide effort? I know it's a tremendous undertaking, but like how we're how's that kind of word getting out so that you're getting contract opportunities out throughout the whole state?
Yeah, I think we're very much in the early stages of development on that. I think a key thing that we're relying on is some of the conversations and some of the input that we're getting on a regional basis to better understand what the needs are in different regions and localities. So while we've started out in the example of like a Compton College or or the work that we're doing in Bakersfield, which is alignment focused but not place based, we will continue to be governed by where we see both the greatest need and where we can supplement with physical presence, some of the on the ground activities that are needed in order to support Calbright's activities. So the 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 with respect to staffing and contracting and some of those things, I think we have the benefit of being a completely remote team at the time, so we aren't bound beyond California in terms of how we how we hire folks in different different parts of the state. But as we think about places where we show up physically and where we build and connect routes, it's informed by where what we're seeing in terms of regional needs, but also what regional presence already exists. And and it's gonna be driven through, you know, that kind of partnership, that kind of understanding. So in some areas, it might be the community college, as Nick was saying, in other areas, it might be another hub entity in a place that 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 is a that is better that is best positioned to serve the needs of this community. So that could be a nonprofit, that could be a library. The statute contemplates a variety of different actors and players that that model development could occur with to get us, you know, to get us connected into place and to support students in place.
Is there a way that we can visually track like where the assets are being placed so then that way we can?
Yeah, there's a there's a there'll be a little bit of an order of operations to things. So soon we'll have a regional breakdown of both what we're seeing in terms of employer shifts and changes as well as student populations. And we've looked at high need areas of the state primarily from a demographic perspective. We'll share that with the board. That information will help us think about both where what regions are could be prioritized. And in the context of that, then each would have a different entry point in terms of what the best local entry point would be for either contracting for programs and services or physical space or any of those things. So I think later this fall, we'll have that analysis and that regional analysis can help us make that next set of decisions around where and with whom.
My 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 last question is, have contracts already been locked into where, you know, this is pretty much set where you're gonna go for the next year? Or are there still opportunities?
No, there's lots of opportunities. And I think to make it not continue to be an ad hoc set of decisions, we want it to be grounded in a regionally based strategy with a clear understanding of where gaps might be that would be helpful for Calbright to to partner to fill the space around.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Escobar Correa.
Hi there, yes, I was wondering about a couple of items listed under one time funding. I just trying to better understand the types of things that might be fun used or are supported through the funding. So one, under strategic initiatives to support students, the five million dollars for competency based education and pathways. I wanted to understand what how how you might envision using those dollars. And then the second item was the five million dollars for student outreach and partnerships. Yeah, just wanted to get a little bit more color of the types of things that you're thinking about, understanding that you have more work to do in terms of how you're gonna target. But just wanting better better to understand how those dollars will be used.
Sure, on the five million for development of online competency based pathways, I think what we want to be assured is that there is more co-development of those activities happening in partnership with other community colleges at higher divisional levels. So as we think about initial programmatic offerings for CalBright, which are shorter term and focused, we want to be able to ensure they have some level of continuity and experience in in our sister colleges. And so we anticipate supporting some of the development costs of those kinds of co-developed pathways. Ideally, those would be in areas informed by labor market study and analysis of where we anticipate shifts in job skills needing to be. So the the idea behind that is it is it is difficult to make the development jump into CBE. We can support that both in terms of our work that we're doing on the standards with Cben and other things like that, but also potentially licensing support and other ways in which we can offset some of the development costs for institutions who who are, you know, all struggling under a constrained budget reality. So it's a it's a way for us to to provide that support while also building CalBright programs. On the other one, the the workforce exchange piece, there is more development that we're doing there, but the idea behind it is in recognition of a lot of the work that is being moved forward at the statewide level through the Department of Labor and through the the state's workforce development response. There, we could see a range of different opportunities to build programming that speaks to some of the gaps that people are experiencing when they hit point in time unemployment dislocation and the sort of many gaps before they get introduced to a a training program that might make sense for them, a more seamless way for them to use that time in unemployment consistent with what we would want to see, what what might be helpful to them from a training perspective to help get them re-entered into the labor market and or additional educational opportunities or career advancement opportunities. So there, again, we see this not as a whole cloth infrastructure builder, anything that we do, but a way for us to strategically use funds to enhance the activities or support or build the gaps in the activities that are needed for that population to see a different outcome.
Okay, trustee Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to ask you a few questions. If we could go to slide two on the third bullet point, please. I think I am I'm really proud of our work there and was wondering if there was a chance to move this up on the page so that we could set the tone for the rest of the document. By contrast, the fact that we hired half of a high estimate or used consultants doesn't really show that we are leaning into our mission as much, though I realize it probably needs to be said. So maybe we can add more detail on the first bullet points, but in general rearrange some things so we can show that we're leaning in on the right places. And my second question is, are you contemplating doing a side by side so that readers can compare nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one at some point instead of toggling back and forth between the slides?
Yes, we we can certainly do that. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other board comments or questions before we open it up to the public? Okay, so we would like to take public comment now.
We have public comment from Eric Calumaji. You're available to speak now.
Thank you. Good morning, President Epstein, Vice President Haynes, members of the CalBright Board, and President Menon. I'm Eric Calumagi, the president of the Community College Association, which is the CTA affiliate dealing with issues of higher education. With regards to the budget, it is remarkable, and therefore I should remark upon it, that the non-academic salaries and benefits planned for this year are well over double the academic salaries and benefits planned for this year. If you look at a typical community college budget, usually it's close to reversed. It's not that atypical for the academic salaries to be double the non-academic salaries. And I hope that the board will keep an eye on what is essentially half the budget that does not directly interact with students. But the reason for my comment is more in that I would like to see the actual budget. It's typical for boards to have a PowerPoint presentation presented to them. And this is certainly not an unusual PowerPoint by any means. But what is unusual is that the more expanded budget does not appear to be available anywhere on your CalBright website. Expanded budgets that provide in detail what the expenses are planned to be and in what areas are usually found on community college websites. They range sometimes as low as forty or fifty pages, sometimes they can hit a hundred and fifty pages. But they certainly provide in considerable more detail, more than you see on a couple of PowerPoint slides. I would like to ask the Board of Governors to direct management to prepare a budget document and place it on the CalBright website for review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calumaji. Is there any other public comments? Regarding regarding that comment, I do think we should do whatever is typical of community colleges. And so I would encourage the staff to take a look at that. And if the more detailed disclosure is is typical among the community colleges, then we should do the same. Okay. With that, there's no more. Anybody else want to make public comment? Okay, then the public hearing on the budget is now concluded. Is there a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
Second by, I missed that, trustee Costa. Well, that's a real vote of confidence when trustee Costa approves the budget. We're we're very pleased. So can we call the roll?
Yes. Field of guard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Corillo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Pam Haynes.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Kim Perico.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Valerie Shaw.
Hi.
Alma Salazar.
Hi.
Lasvia Lobos.
Hi.
Joseph Williams.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, the budget is adopted. We'll now move into the information items. Item 5.1, Strategic Vision Development.
Thank you, President Epstein and Vice President Haynes and members of the Board of Trustees. I have the privilege of introducing consultant Lauren Asher, who some of you may know, she's renowned for her expertise in public philanthropic and non-sector work across education, healthcare, and labor issues. She was formerly the president of the Institute for College Access and Success, co-founder of the Project on Student Debt, and has led and advised on high impact research policy and implementation efforts to improve the lives of low income students and working families. She's also served in key leadership, senior leadership roles at the Kaiser Family Foundation, National Partnership for Women and Families, and the U.S. Department of Labor. Her current work is focused on increasing equity and opportunity focused on education and workforce issues. She provides thought leadership, strategic development, program design and evaluation, strategic planning, landscape analysis, and implementation design support. We are excited and have asked her to work with us over the next few months to help build Calbright's strategic vision. We are in very good hands. I just wanted to highlight before she jumps into things. This is a very important stage in the process of planning for us. It will provide us a clear direction in terms of a high level roadmap for the next three years. It will help us communicate about our objectives. It will help us talk about how we will measure and demonstrate our progress over time. And most importantly, it will, it will provide as an important guide for the next phase of the college's development. With that, I would love to turn things over to Lauren to walk us through a bit more on the objectives and that we've set forth and the process and the scoping around this phase of planning for the college.
Thank you, and welcome, Lauren, whom I have known for quite a while. I just want to point out that we have about 35 minutes left in this meeting. There's one more item, so we have this PowerPoint. So we'd appreciate going through it on the quick side and leaving more time for conversation among the board and the public.
Absolutely, and thank you all. Good morning. I think it's still morning. It's a pleasure to have the chance to work with you on the strategic vision development process. And I'll briefly describe the process we've begun, the purpose, objectives, general timeline and key next steps, and then take your questions. So Ms. Washington, you can actually just skip to slide three if that's okay. We're on slide one now. Thank you. And I'll keep this to less than five minutes. This process, as President Menon mentioned, is tailored to address Calbright's needs at this very early stage of its development and the context that we're in with the pandemic and its evolving economic impact. That's why it makes sense to take a look at kind of near term vision and goals. The ultimate purpose of this work is to inform Calbright's overarching direction and its choices during this unique time. And, you know, this is the period in these next three years as Calbright is going to be building towards providing high quality credentials at scale in an extremely dynamic environment. The process is going to draw on a range of placeholder, excuse me, stakeholder perspectives, including all of you as trustees and the general public. And there's a longer list farther down in the slides. The resulting report will paint a clear picture of Calbright's purpose and near term goals, written for anyone who wants to know what Calbright is, where it's heading, and why. Next slide, please. So there's several interrelated strategic objectives for this work, including laying out, as President Menon mentioned, a high level roadmap that sets realistic expectations and clarifies goals for this particular critical time. Improving public understanding, both of what it takes to achieve high quality statewide scale, and the unduplicated value that Calbright aims to bring to students, a range of partners, and the community college system as a whole. The strategic vision will also support public accountability through greater transparency into how the institution tracks its own progress. And finally, will address common questions, perceptions, and misperceptions about Calbright as its footprint starts to expand and the need to serve economically displaced Californians has just never been greater. Next slide, please. So here's a quick look at the planned timeline. Now through November is for research, analysis, and vision development. As you can see, we're seeking input from a lot of different stakeholders, including all of you, faculty, staff, students, labor, employees, the chancellor's office, executive and legislative branches of government, and philanthropy. There will also be opportunities for public input at multiple board meetings. And we're looking forward to working with the trustees on this across the next three meetings of both the full board and the executive committee. Then in November and December, a report that reflects all this work will be drafted and then finalized in December and January, designed and released by February. Next slide, please. To zero in just a bit more, these are the main next steps in the strategic vision development process. We'll be gathering stakeholder input through a combination of direct interviews, group discussions, and written questions or surveys, and analyzing that input. That will include a strategic vision work session with the full board at your November meeting. You'll be getting a few questions to respond to in advance. Your answers, as long or short as you want to make them, will help focus the work of that session. And it will be a chance to develop a shared perspective on the next three years and also to receive public comment. Next slide, please. So thanks for following along with this very brief overview. I hope it was short enough for you, President Epstein. And now we open things up to questions.
Now, that was stunningly brief and great, leaving lots of time for discussion. So I suspect maybe we take down the PowerPoint and up the full screen and see what board members want to comment on this item.
I have a question, Tom.
Go ahead, Trustee Costa.
I don't know if this is for Ajita or Lauren, but you know, on slide five, we talked about kind of stakeholder outreach, which will clearly be really important as part of this process. And one of them is philanthropy, which I don't know that I'm against, but I just want to hear more about that and how you view that sector as part of this work.
Sure, happy to. I think we have identified a lot of interest from philanthropy in understanding how this model can work and potentially how it meets with many of, you know, the mission alignment with many of their efforts and works, particularly to respond for this population with new learning opportunities. And so I think it is useful to understand from them how our priorities align with theirs. It is also useful for us to understand where there might be opportunities for strategic engagement with philanthropy, including potential for, you know, additional grants that might support areas of Calbright's work. So I think in the short run, it's to gain our understanding and have our, shaping of our work, understand where philanthropy is. In the future, I think it will provide us some opportunities to increase our engagement with philanthropy.
Trustee Escobar Correa.
Thanks. Excited about this process. I think it'll be really helpful in us understanding the direction we want to go and really get, I'm hoping for some really deep and substantive feedback from all the different players out there in the community that could benefit from better understanding Calbright's, you know, the goals set out, the legislation and the vision we, you know, we want to build together with the community. On the kind of question of outreach to various stakeholders, you know, I'm aware of groups that are not necessarily connected to the workforce or adult education system, but at least not officially, but informally are providing a lot of support to the immigrant community. You know, they're not able to get money through the Department of Education or the Department of Labor for WEO type activities, but they are very much involved in basically doing this work without any resources. And but they have a lot of knowledge about what the immigrant community in particular needs in order to really access these type of programs. And so I'm just curious if you're thinking about that, if there are some ideas of folks we can offer up to you, you can decide, you know, whether to reach out to them or not. But just that, I have, from what I understand, that that often is a community that doesn't get tapped into as much. And so it's a question I have. I'm also wondering if you're going to be able to have some services, some of the outreach provided in language for folks that maybe aren't as fluent in English. I know that this work is still very much focused on English speaking folks, but down the line, there might be opportunities to engage folks that are limited English proficient.
That's very helpful, Felicia. We would absolutely love to take your recommendations on folks that would be useful to reach out to. I think it is a perspective that we would like to have a greater understanding of. And you correctly point out that by way of sort of sequencing, we are focused on English speaking largely because it takes a different kind of organizational capacity to do the other piece well, and we would not enter into that work unless we were ready, ready to build to that. So I think this would be super helpful in the stage of the process. Please feel free to send, you can send them to me. And I can't remember if Lauren shared her email address. Either way would work.
It's in the last slide of the presentation that you have in your packet. If anyone has questions later as well as now, please feel free, or suggestions. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ajita.
Thank you.
Member Perry.
First, I want to say hi, Lauren. It's been a very, very long time. It's nice to see you in this, in my capacity here and to see your good work. And it couldn't be more timely, so thank you. I think this will be a hugely helpful asset in addition to the work that we do. And also, I think you should consider consulting on how to do a very brief presentation. I think there is a niche out there that needs to be filled. I'm going to reiterate something I said in the private session, which is just in the stakeholders. If you can think about youth who've aged out of foster care, I think they're an important population to be served and would be ones well worth consulting as you compile what's going to be this very helpful document.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other trustee comments? Does that say, Trustee Salazar?
Just wanted to commend the staff for making this a priority issue and giving it more than 20 minutes attention for today's meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Board President Epstein. I'm very, very excited for this. I think it's a perfect opportunity to kind of make up where Calbright has historically lacked in and kind of, you know, partnering with different constituency groups in the California Community Colleges and really garnering that feedback. And so I hope, you know, just a couple of comments. One, that, you know, if we want to get perspective on, you know, foster care, if we want to get perspective on formally incarcerated, on DSPS, on anything, the Student Senate for California Community Colleges is the place to go for the student perspective. I hope that while Calbright has done a great job of, you know, partnering and getting the perspective of Academic Senate for California Community Colleges as of late, I hope this is the opportunity to really create a great relationship with the Student Senate for California Community Colleges. In addition, you know, as a part of this discussion, I know it's a bit early to say this, but I just want to get it out there that, you know, as a part of this, there be a kind of movement to really identify a timeline, a reasonable timeline, to develop something like I just linked in the chat, which is a participatory governance overview chart. I think this should be a part of the strategic kind of vision of the institution to eventually really get the discussions going on how we can intertwine constituencies within the institution and make it so that, you know, it's not necessarily me as a student who is a statewide student leader representing the students of Calbright, who I could not relate to in many ways on these, you know, various projects that we have going on. It'll be really beneficial once we can develop the internal structures to allow those groups to represent themselves and their interests. So just wanted to make those brief comments, and I'm super excited to see how this develops.
Thanks, Colm. And I just, yes, we'll definitely be happy to reach out on that. And the other thing I would say is it is important to us to think about both folks who are in our institutions now, who can participate in processes like this, and also to hold space for the perspectives, for the information, especially the contextual feedback that we get from populations that have not found their way to our institutions yet. And so also privileged in this process, I think, is going to be a lot of the work that we have done in terms of focus groups and in terms of outreach and engagement with key focused populations for the college. So I think there is going to be a lot that will govern both current student experience and such, but maybe, and perhaps most importantly, who we're designing for.
Thanks so much.
Did I see Trust, Vice President Haynes?
Thank you. So I think this sort of bears repeating a third time. Colm, you're absolutely right. Ajita, you're absolutely right. And I think the balancing act will be how do we, how do we make certain that the voices of our external stakeholders are heard? The traditional ones, how do we make certain that we're looking at those voices of those who have yet to come to us to make certain that that's heard, but then also to make certain that we have not, that we really mine, M-I-N-E, the voices of our internal folks, be they students, be their administrators, who are on the ground doing this work? Because it's that, it's that try interacting piece of this that we will get a fuller picture of what our immediate future is and where it needs to go, where it is and where it needs to go in the short run, more importantly than even in the long run.
Thanks. Any other board member comments? Okay, are there, is there, is there any public comment on this item?
No, there's no public comment.
Okay, thanks. Well, thank you, Lauren. We look forward to working with you and you solving all our problems and coming out with this great report in the lengthy time period of about three months, so good luck.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, moving on to item 5.2, Reports on Contracts and Purchases. The Chief Financial Administrative Officer, Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, thank you. So this is a standard report we present every board meeting. Certainly the contracts that we have executed in the past month, and then the significant purchases that were made in the past month. All these contracts and purchases are fairly routine. Only significant one is a couple of contracts with competency based education network and a couple other related to, you know, looking at our program pathways and improving our program pathways. And then, you know, a couple of other contracts supporting that. So that I'm happy to take any questions.
Any board comments or questions about the contracts and purchases?
President Epstein.
Trustee Fitzgerald.
I am almost forced to ask. I see Kahoot on here. I'm just wondering if we can speak to Kahoot a little bit.
Kahoot. Where, oh, that's on the purchases. That's one of the IT licenses. Let me.
Nick, I can speak if that's helpful. I think.
Great, that one is.
Yeah, I couldn't do that one either.
That was used in terms of, we did a detailed onboarding retreat with our new faculty and team members. We had quite a number of people starting at once and had the opportunity to go into, you know, building a cohort and learning about all different parts of the college and the students. And as part of making that interactive and checking for learning and understanding, but also trying to maximize long sessions on Zoom. And we, Kahoot was one of the pieces of that that we engaged with.
That's awesome. That's awesome. I just wanted to point that out. I'm an ASO president, and we've been using Kahoot a lot for team bonding and stuff like that, so that's great. I'm an ASO president, and we've been using Kahoot a lot for team bonding and stuff like that. So that's great.
Okay, any other board comments?
That's why we have you on the board, Colm, so you can update us on the things we need to know. Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, we are, we're at public, is there somebody else wants to talk on this? Okay, we're at public comment, general public comment here. If any, any member of the public wants to say anything. Okay, hearing that, we've actually finished early. Lauren, you could have gone back and done another 15 minutes. But thanks, y'all. Well, we will reconvene at 12:30 as a Board of Governors.
Thank you.